You're watching Access to the Port County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the January 29th meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesses the port county.org.
We're going to go through Pacer tonight and talk about, we're going to start with road classifications, and then kind of explain that just a little bit to you, like how road classifications work. You can go to NERC see, you will see Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. They use these classifications, and this is how we do our Pacer ratings related to that. And it's also related to what roads we choose and which way we prioritize our roads. So, um, this is Hashem Khalil from Global. He's doing our Pacer and our CCMG force right now. Without further ado, I'm going to let him take it over and I'll jump in.
Thank you so much.
And I'll run the AD.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Hashem Khalil. I'm Global Engineering, 601 Franklin Street. I think I know most of you. So today, we're going to be talking just very briefly an overview of roadways and roadway classification, and you know, how they are rated, and what does that translate to ENDOT when the city is applying for CCMG or community crossing matching grant? And it helps for future grants as well. And it's a good management system for all the streets in the city. And ENDOT actually requires cities that it's applying for CCMG to have an asset management plan. So based on, so please, this is very informal, so ask me questions as I'm going. There's no PowerPoint presentation. This is happening really fast. We are trying to put the application together for CCMG. But the purpose of this is for any of the new council members and existing ones to ask any questions that they might not know about roadways. I'll be glad to answer, and I'm sure city engineer can probably answer as well. Hopefully, between all of the engineers in this room can probably answer. So without further ado, I guess I mean...
I gave it away.
Okay. Oh, I tried. Don't mind. That's the second one you've shown. So the first, if you don't mind, can we go to the first thing, the classification?
This is it? Yeah. We go up to the classification?
Yeah. So what you see on the map, it's actually the Port County roadway classification, including the city of Michigan City classification for roadways. The roadways are classified to multiple classifications, and I'll go through each one of them. And they are based on federal definition. The city is actually electing to do those designation. And after you elect the designation, it goes to NERC. NERC approves the designation, and then it goes to ENDOT, and ENDOT have final approval. And it will be on the list as such. And some of those classifications, obviously the interstate, which runs east and west 94, for example, other freeways and expressway like 421, Highway 12, Highway 20. Those are freeway or expressways. And the principal arterials, I'm sorry, principal arterials are like the highways that we have. And then minor arterials, and major collector, and minor collector, and local roads. So some of those classifications are based on amount of traffic, connection between two highways, between two major roads. Those are classifications that can be higher or lower. So they are in a hierarchy in a way. And it's the importance of that road, of the amount of traffic, and the connection between the two roads that is connected. For example, Franklin Street is connecting 421, 94 in this incident, all the way to 20 and Highway 12. So that's very important or a higher priority. That's basically the classification of the roadways without getting into the weeds, but there is an application to change that if need be to a higher or lower. Sometimes the city will construct a new roadway that will connect to another major roadway. That becomes a higher priority. So that's a change of the use of that roadway, and that could unlock some grants from the feds and from the state as well. So depending on the city, new development, roadways could change classification. But that's through an application, one through the council, obviously. And then it goes to NERC, and then ENDOT, and finally the feds. So please answer us. I'll be glad to take any questions.
Can you give the dates of the deadlines for when those applications need to be submitted?
So...
We have one that we just did.
Are you talking about classifications or CCMG?
CCMG.
We're going to get there.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So the classification is really not, it's a designation for the roadway of how important to the city that roadway, and based on multiple criteria. So the designation is actually self-designation. But you know, it goes through a review process from different organizations until it goes all the way to the feds to be approved as such as a designation. For example, Highway 35, which is Michigan Boulevard, that was, I think that was a change in designation, if I remember correctly, as I read.
A long time ago.
Right. 15 years ago. There was a change in designation because it became part of the city. So there was a process actually to change that. And the council approved it, NERC approved it, ENDOT approved it, and the feds.
Any questions about that? So that's how we rank roads and classify. Just get, just there. Okay.
Hashem? Yeah, one thing I would like, and I don't know what the other council people like, but I can hardly, I can't read this map.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to get a bigger one.
Sure.
Both sizes bigger.
24 by 36.
Yeah, that way I know what the classifications of the different streets are in town. You know, I know what a highway is. We all know interstate highway in that. Once you start getting smaller, you can see green lines, but you can't read what street they are.
Yeah.
I can at least. So I'd like to get that. The other thing I'd like for each council member to have is the booklet that we got, and I believe it was from a HAS, I think you, didn't you Brad? It had all the different samples of what a number one rated road looks like, what a number two rated road looks like, number three, four, or five. Yeah. Somebody gave it to the city council.
Sure.
But I'd like to get a copy of that.
Council example.
Yeah, if that's it, then that's what I'd like to have for all the councilmen. So they know exactly what we're talking about when you have a rating on a roadway.
Sure thing.
Okay.
So I will send, if you don't mind, I will send the multiple emails. Like, or even one email with email view, okay, for everyone.
If you give it a thought, just give it to me, a book.
Sure.
That's fine.
Sure thing. My point, I guess, for the roadway classification, to stay up to date on all the roadway classification in the Port County, including Michigan City and the city of the Port, and all the cities around the county, there is a link actually from NERC. It's an interactive link, so it's a map on the computer. And you can zoom into the street or the segment even of the street, and you can actually click on it, and it will tell you that classification of the roadway itself.
Okay.
It is good because it gets updated actually by the state auditor. Because every time the city actually accept a street, so for example, a new subdivision comes into the city. And after the city accept all the roadway inside that subdivision, it gets classified, and it gets updated to the state auditor, and it goes to that map. So you'll be up to date on all the new streets that is coming into the city. And you will see all the existing streets as well. But I'll send that to all.
Okay, and then if we could, if I want to comment on the list that we were handed at the council meeting?
We will get to the CCMG if you don't mind. I mean, the roadway classification, you're more than welcome to ask me.
No, no. Were you going to go through this list?
In fact, I was going to go through the process of the CCMG, but if there's a specific question about the list helping.
No, go ahead.
I'll be...
Go ahead. Go through the process, and then we can talk about how you guys rated the streets.
The streets have been rated actually from last year, if that's correct, Brad?
Right. They're rated every other year, and they're updated most recently this past fall.
Right. So I'm going to go through the actual, you know, can we go to the map where there isn't one to five?
Yeah. So it's hard to depict. I know it's very hard to see all this. I'm sorry if I can't get a big map right now.
Yep. So the city last year, so each year, as part of the city CCMG program, the city has to actually update the rating, which goes up to the LTAP as a polytagus, and then it goes to another system by ENDOT. But anyway, it gets updated to ENDOT. Essential. And last year, I believe, all the streets has been rated. And based on those rating, this map has been devised. And this map has been devised actually by the city, G.I.S. personnel. Is that correct?
Hey Hashem, can you tell us how the streets are rated?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So in this map, actually, you will see the rating, actually, most of the ratings on this map is from one to five. And the reason that this map was actually generated, the mayor was actually trying to do the lowest rating, which is the worst, the worst streets. And it's from one to five. The one to five was based on, like I said, all the assessment that happened were updated as of December of last year. The rating itself for the street, if we can go to the manual now. So this is, it's called the Pacer Manual. It's a pavement manual or pavement assessment system for all the streets in the state of Indiana, actually. For all the local government in the state of Indiana. They use it if they are applying for CCMGs, they have to use this manual. The rating actually happened between 10 and one, 10 being the best, one being the worst. As you can see in the picture, a sample of 10 and a sample of one. And you can see probably the difference. So 10 being the best, one being very chopped and alligator tracks, has a problem, great, subgrade problems in some areas. And those are visual inspections. So the rating happened actually that it's based on visual cracks or alligators with drainage issues, they're pounding with water. Most usually, you go into the rating. Is that, any questions?
Based off of the map, and Hashem in the fifth floor, and we have a new council person, Mr. Coulter. And just because I frequent drive because I'm in the area throughout Eastport, I'm just curious, Furr and Hobart's done. But it's excluded, and we got Walker Street as a three. But Walker Street is the most traveled street opposed to Furr and Hobart.
It has been added to the list.
It is going to be added.
It has been added to the list.
Oh, it has been. Okay. But not under the 2024, not for this year?
It is, yes.
Oh, it will be added to the...
I'm sorry, when I'm referring to the list, I'm referring to the 2024-1. So there's two cycles of, so I'm going to jump now to CCMG if you don't mind. So the CCMG process after the rating, and after you upload the rating to ENDOT, the CCMG has two cycles per year. This year is a little bit different, which is great for all the community, actually. It's 1.5 million match. The city of Michigan City has a size of Michigan City. It's the 50% match. There is other smaller town that can go up to 75%. But for our size or for our purpose, it's 50/50. So the CCMG has two cycles, one January, or they call it the call for the grant. And it's call number one right now, which is January 31st is the deadline for submitting the grant, for submitting the application for the grant. The second cycle is in July 31st, and that's call number two. And those are the only two. In one year, you can only apply for the maximum, which is the 1.5 million match. So you can't apply for anything more if you receive the entire funding in January cycle. So once you reach the maximum 1.5 million, then you wait for the next year, and you hope that you get more.
And now it's just increased to half a million this year, right?
1.5 million. So now, it's, the city is actually applying, in fact, the council just approved the million, to my knowledge, and the redevelopment commission approved up to 600,000. So that's 1.5 to the max for the grant, so that equal to $3 million worth of paving around the entire city. So that's as far as the CCMG process itself. So part of selecting the streets is selecting the streets that is from one to five, or at least try to get as low as possible, and the most traveled street, and the highest classification of the street. So you're trying to reach, move as many vehicles as soon as possible through your city or into your city. So the streets that have been selected, mostly they have a higher classification, a lower rating, and... And if it doesn't have the lower rating, it's high enough that we can actually do either surface or full patch, so we can allow for other streets to be paved. So it's a balance between whether it's one, that means it's a complete reconstruction, and that takes a lot of the other street, from the other streets. So you're trying to actually do the three and above as much as you can. And you know, some of the segments, actually, they have different rating. So one block could be one, the second block could be two, third block it could be three. So you're trying to take the average of all, and you do full patching. Full patching meaning that there's some type of a subgrade treatment, whether it's a full depth or whichever you're going to find actually during construction and during the design as well. So I think the CCMG process is a balance between the most traveled vehicle roadways and the most that you can get amount-wise, linear-wise. So this year, I believe, we're doing 4.2 miles approximately. So 14,000 something feet, I think.
Hashem, I haven't been involved in the LPA program in that too much. What, the state increase the total grant amounts this year with the half a million increase to, you know?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what's the total available funding that the state has for the 20th grant this, take one?
For the entire state?
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure, but I'll find out.
No, I just want, like I said, I haven't been involved in the LPA. I don't know, even though they increased the amount that everybody could apply for, I didn't know if it was an equivalent amount that they increased for the whole state to... I'm just trying to feel what our likelihood is of getting the full 1.5 million grant.
So here's my understanding, and I have no idea, there's no, maybe Brad will know, but to my knowledge, I guess, that some of the smaller communities paved all their streets in a way in the last seven years or eight years. So that allowed the state to actually maybe have more increase to the bigger cities. I'm hearing that, you know...
That's kind of what I heard internally in that, because I haven't been involved with the LPA program or stuff that much.
But that's definitely what I know so far, but I don't know what exactly happened. You probably know more than everyone else.
So based off of the scores here, the one through five, am I to assume then, okay, all the ones that say blue is 2024 for this year, then are we going to the fives, the green?
No, you...
Or are you going to start from the ones of the...
We're trying to say, yeah, we are trying to say if one segment or one block out of the entire... When I call a segment, I guess, and I'm sorry, the application called the roadway is a segment. So if it's one block out of the segment or a roadway that is one, we can probably do that. But if the entire street, for example, Michigan Boulevard, it's pretty bad to the point that it's actually getting lower probably to one after the snow that we had. So it wouldn't surprise me that it's complete full reconstruction. Now, if it's a complete full reconstruction for the entire Michigan Boulevard, there is no way that 3 million can do it. So that means that the city needs to actually seek different type of funding, whether it's from NERC, and I think the city is actually trying to get funding from NERC or from, I'm sorry, from the federal grant. Paul?
I'm looking at the map that, I don't know who produced it, but I have some major concerns on York Street. Has no coloration at all, like it's a primo street. And I got to tell you that York Street is in dire need of repair. It's, the shoulders are being handed away by poor drainage. The bricks are moving away from the whole street. The street needs to be, the shoulders need to be shored up. And I don't know, I'm looking at this, and I see this pageant map as a major flaw here on York Street. And we have created a funding mechanism for paving of brick streets in the city of Michigan City. How's that going to be addressed in this, and it was passed last year. How's that being addressed in this grant, this application to, in the first call?
So the application did not include any historic street, or I'm sorry, brick streets or historic street in this case. Let me, in this round of application, we don't have any brick street. We have brick crosswalks, but not brick streets. But I'm not quite sure what's the funding mechanism for the next, for the next round?
I'm bringing that up of the York Street on the corners. And you can go over there right down, there's big pools of water on the shore. There's no drainage. It's poor. It's beyond poor. It's been neglected, and I think that it needs to be addressed in the next cycle. Also, on the map, you have Washington Street graded as a five. There are huge gaps in that asphalt that are inch and a half wide. And during this last cold weather, the street was buckling up. You know, a lot of people want to know. I've been doing a lot of research on this all. I can't imagine that Washington Street's not on it, and not even for participation in the TIF zone. Because I think everybody here knows that Washington Street north from 11th Street is very poor, in very poor shape. So those are some of my concerns, and as you can tell, I do take this information very seriously. And to Don's point earlier, we had a high-sponsored workshop on our last, for our last council at Prigger Furr, Prigger Memorial Hall. And maybe the booklet that he's asking about is in the clerk's office, because I made sure everybody had a copy of the book. And I believe I gave one to the clerk's office. So with that being said, I've got a lot of concerns on the, in general, York Street, because I think that when these streets are done, is the sanitary district signed off on that they have no plans for any repair work? Because I bring that up because if you pave a street that, and then you got to go back and tear it up, because I noticed that they just did some work on Poplar Street over by the curb that goes to Michigan Boulevard, what is that, Durman or DuPage? So I think that before anything gets paved, that the sanitary district needs to be signed off of it, and the water department, they have a forward plan and not just haphazard. Because, and to go one step further than that, I think there needs to be a repair brochure made up for contractors that are the water department or the sanitary district, that those streets or any cuts are brought to grade and standard. Because you can go down Franklin Street right now, and after they paved it, and they made cuts on the street, and they're falling apart right now in the midtown section. So those are just some of my concerns, and I think it, I think that hopefully in the next round, that some of these things will be addressed because I know that there was a lot of concerns and a lot of support for the money for the brick streets. And hopefully, the reason I bring that up and the reason I'm here, they got Charles Street that is perfect. Charles Street is not perfect. I got a huge, huge repair spot by the driveway. Every time they call that street, they chip huge pieces of brick off. And the next time, if one, if one damages one of my cars, hey, I mean, I think there should even be a standard on Collins Brick Streets, on using like a three-quarter ton truck with a lighter blade and changing the settings on them. But with that being said, I think there needs to be more care given to those streets because once they're repaired, that those streets have lasted over 100 years. Or no, almost 100 years. But the thing is, is I think for the payback on fixing them is more than just the price tag that we're at right now to repair them. You know, and I think that a lot of the previous, I think, I think all the previous council people supported that. And I think we need to come up with a plan and start addressing it.
Paul, what's the address of Charles Street for that patches?
That is the 100 East Block.
And as for the brick streets in general, the community crossings managing grant, at least when I was doing them seven, eight years ago, when they first started, the intent is for distressed asphalt pavement streets only. There's other funding sources that we'll look at for doing brick streets in the city. But this particular CCMG program is just to address asphalt roadways. So it won't be any concrete overlays, and it won't be brick streets, and you improve that. That's, we have to find other mechanisms for funding for those things and we're going to start looking into that.
Well, if I'm not mistaken or not, the first year they used CCMG money to do their first block on York Street by Marshall.
I don't know, Brad.
It may have been an addition to the contract on separate funding outside of CCMG.
Yeah, so I'll, a lot of time, let me probably recap here about, you know, some of the streets that you see probably right now after the snowstorm that we had. I believe that most of the assessment happened probably in October or November, right before probably the supplemental to ENDOT for the new updated assessment or the new updated LTAP. From now until then, I can see even in some of the streets that I drive frequently, that they deteriorated really, really fast. Like, most of the potholes that were filled, they are out right now. They popped up. And it's major holes or major cracks, and the cracks are even getting worse. So from October to now, I can see probably some of the street dropped two, if not even more. more. So as we are going, I guess, for the new assessment, you will see probably that the need is much, much higher for reconstruction of some of those streets.
It's not just Michigan City streets, and I've lost full millions on I-65 that just peeled up. We've been dealing with that in the last few weeks that I've been, I've been there before I came here, so. Yeah, there's 35 through La Porte is almost a passable spot until the cold patch got in there right after the snow. So yeah, this, this past few weeks has just been terribly harmful to our asphalt roads over Northwest Indiana.
And the deterioration will continue, you know, even further unfortunately, but.
All right, so this, so this rate, this rating was done back in November, you're saying?
October or November, Brad is probably.
In the fall, in the fall. So as far as how this process works, because this is how it was explained to me, right? Two people go out, right? And then they go to each street in the city? So we covered every street in Michigan City? Yeah?
Correct.
Okay. And then you guys, the people look at it from each intersection, and then they rate it from there? Is that how that's done?
There's actually 2,000 segments in the database, so it's, it's from intersection to intersection. Yep, so that's.
Okay.
And then the process is you try and string together twos and threes, threes and fours. From a paving perspective, to increase efficiency, we want to have as long a stretch that's comparable as we can, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I thought, but for the other council people here, I just wanted to explain that to them so they know what the process is. And getting back to the list that we were handed out at the council meeting, there's some streets on here that I agree with. I looked at every one of them, I think except maybe two, and I have a question about Union Street. Now, Union Street, the width of Union Street is, I don't know.
It's double.
Yeah, it's double, it's a double street or what have you?
Boulevard.
So, so is the plan, is the plan to blacktop that street from one end to the other and this whole, because I rode down that street today, and, you know, I didn't think that that street was as bad as some other streets that I've ridden down in Michigan City. And, you know, why, and, and we're gonna spend, I don't know, 150 grand blacktopping this big huge street?
I have the estimates inside.
You know, for the amount of traffic that maybe goes down that street, I don't know. And there's some other ones here, and I can go over it with you guys, I don't know if it'll make any difference or not. But, you know, take for example, Shim, you know, right in front of your house?
Yep.
Okay, on Cool Spring Ave?
Yes.
So if you go from Maple, okay, where you live.
I'm five to Cool Spring Ave House, too.
I mean, yeah, I mean, that whole area, that whole area is chewed up. Why that wouldn't be on here for that block, for that main thoroughfare in Michigan City?
Can I add something?
I have no idea. And that stop has been like that for a long time in front of your house on Cool Spring Ave.
I'm not upset though, just gonna, but I'm gonna say actually something very light here, that the whole street is a bunch of engineers and surveyors. So, but you're right, you're absolutely right.
And real estate people.
And real estate.
How come something like that is not on, that's not on this list? And take for example, like Tilden Ave from Cool Spring Ave all the way down to Greenwood. Yeah, no, to, yeah, to Greenwood. That means ought to be blacktopped. That's fallen apart.
Tilden is on the list for 2023-2 paving.
Yeah.
Yeah, from Cool Spring all the way to Greenwood, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, okay.
Is that correct, Brad?
That's the correct limits, yep. That, that was the project that just bid a couple weeks ago on January 2nd, and that goes, as Shim said, on Tilden Ave from Greenwood Ave up to Cool Spring Ave.
And that's around Union Street, only thing I just wanna add in regards to Union Street is we used to always hear or get complaints because it floods a lot.
Yep.
So I don't know.
So. What I touched on, the project we've taken care of, the path was put in that area that was flooding, correct?
So.
I think sanitary district did some, something there, it sounds familiar.
I think, I think too, the reason why Union was chosen is because we paved everything else in there, go ahead and knock Union out. Now, those streets in there theoretically, tens, nines, eights, sevens, sixes, you're into maintenance rather than replacement. So to get them all up, we're maintaining them rather than then getting a level of six to a five, four, three, two, then you're in a grind, a building fill or full construction. You want to be in that six and above to maintain them, and I think that was probably the logical, sure that was the logic of it, is that we replaced everything in there.
Well, I would appreciate, since you're taking over this project, that maybe you guys take a ride over there to Union Street?
Of course.
And give, and give your professional assessment?
Of course, I did just.
Before we burn $150,000 or maybe something, we can spend somewhere else?
I don't, so let me explain about the CCNG and the drainage and, you know, how we can delete and add for future projects. So this is the first cycle, like I mentioned, and the first cycle and the drainage can be added as an incidental to the project itself. So it cannot be a drainage project and then we paint. So it has to be incidental in a way. So if the drainage pipe is broken in one location, it can be fixed as a point repair. Or it can, if there's a catch basin that it's cracked or it needs replaced, that could be replaced under this program. And we have.
I'm sorry.
Same goes for Simon's team.
Correct.
Well, unless it's an ADA issue.
Correct.
So the, the CCNG, they are very, very specific about how we can spend the money or how the local community can spend the money and cannot spend the money. Very, very specific actually, and, and the segments, once it's applied for, even, even you can spend less money on one segment if you have, if you have it under one application ID. I'm sorry, I don't mean to get into the weeds of the application itself, but the way it works, I guess, that it's one application ID under different segments with multiple unit prices and multiple scopes. And you can co-mingle those funds as long as you maintain the limits or you maintain the scope for the segments that you applied for. If we delete one segment, we have to pay back in that, and we're trying to eliminate that. So once we apply for a roadway with the limits, we are trying to achieve the limits and achieve the scope so we don't have to pay back anything.
Okay.
I think.
Then I have, I have. And then I got another spot, the 1900 block of Franklin Street. That's where Snyder Insurance is at and the Lucky Stop is at.
Yep.
That one block of Franklin Street, it has been cold patched for the last five summers. It's been crack sealed five summers ago, and the concrete or the, the blacktop is just peeling up. And I, and I, you know, I, I understand the theory of economics where we're not just gonna come in and do one block, because you gotta mobilize all these, all this equipment.
Yep.
I understand all that, but that's our main street of town, and this block looks like hell. I mean, if you go down there tonight when you leave here or on your way to work tomorrow, just go past there and really take a look at that.
You're right.
It's ridiculous. All right, so that's enough about the streets, but just, I think Skylar, you, Shim, street department has to get involved.
I'm sorry.
You gotta get used to it.
I'm getting roped in in the first day.
Yeah, but I mean, to me, to me, I know the crack sealing, to me, is lacking tremendously in Michigan City, and that's why we're doing this blacktopping. You know, Ohio Street needs to be crack sealed, Washington Street needs to be crack sealed, Pine Street, all these major streets in Michigan City, they need to be crack sealed, because now we see what happens. It snows, water gets down, starts popping up. I mean, it's just simple, and, and last year, the street department crack sealed from Cool Spring Ave out to 421 and 20. Did a great job, never came back and went from Barker Ave down to 11th Street, okay? Why? That should have been done. The next thing we have to do is get a striping company into this city and start striping these main thoroughfares so people can see where they're driving on the street. Franklin Street, right, our main street in town, where all the visitors come into town for the boat show, and all the big developers come into town for the double track, because this is where it's all happening. But actually, take your time and ride down that street, you can't even see some of the traffic lines in that street. To me, to me, being on a city, a responsible council person, it's embarrassing to look at that street. It's embarrassing to look at, you know, Greenwood Ave, or not Greenwood Ave, because that one there is, oh, okay, but Cool Spring Ave, you know, all these main interceptors need to be painted, and I am going to be on my high horse to get that done.
Everything you said are reasons that probably you're from the end up to come and try to fix these issues, and I see this like you.
Yeah, yeah. So one thing about.
With you.
I think all of us, so one thing about paving though, paving the street or blacktopping or the surface or resurface, so which is mill and pave, normally those last for probably around seven to 10 years, assuming good weather, maintenance, you know, regular maintenance or normal operation. When we have snow like this or it reduces the life or it requires more maintenance. So the, the resurfacing of the project itself is closer probably to seven years cycle or a 10 years cycle, or at least around this area. Then if it's a reconstruction, usually it stays around 15 years or you assume that there is 15 years of life cycle for that street, assuming again, maintenance, making sure that, you know, if there is a heavy weather like we have right now, you maintain it more regularly. As far as you touch on, on the crack sealing, the CCNG actually pays for the crack sealing as well. So if there is any money left during this grant cycle, assuming that we get it, I hope, we're crossing our fingers. The crack sealing actually, the end up will, I'm sorry, CCNG will pay for the material or they will pay even for the contract itself. Unfortunately though, the contract, what we've seen in the last, I want to say, eight, 10 years maybe, for crack sealing contractors are very difficult to hold or to get a crack sealing company to actually do it. So it's a very difficult industry, if you will, rather than paving. So a lot of the cities and towns elect to pave and use the money for pavement entirely. But most of the time, we don't hit the exact number for the grant.
I know, Shim, I guess my whole point is, the condition of our streets in Michigan City, in my mind, they're below average.
Yep.
They are below average. Every street I go down, most of every street I go down, spider cracks all over, you know, not being crack sealed, and, yeah, and it's just, I'm not laying blame with anybody, I'm just saying that's something that's gotta come to the top, because we'll never, we'll never have enough money to repair all these streets once they really start falling apart.
Hopefully with the 1.5 million and the state and the other type of guidance with the Fats and NERC, hopefully that will, will assist, you know, and, and our chief.
One of the things the mayor wants me to do is try to find alternate sources of funding for street improvements, so that's part of my, my job as well, see what we can find out there to help us pay for these streets.
The pacer, the pacer, that's just an acronym for how you guys just go out and rank the roads on a scale of one to 10. It was the assessment was developed at the University of Wisconsin. And when on and off for the roads, I think we also need a pacer rating like what, what Don President Wolski said, for the road striping. You know, a lot of these, in other manner, we need for, for this road signage. A lot of the signage you see was maybe put in like 35 years ago, but back with Bob Beeler, who was the mayor when Paul started out the council. Now, there's a funding mechanism the state did put in back in 2015, which lost the other municipalities around Northwest Indiana, and Laporte, Hordick, Valpo, Gary, Hammond, Crown Point, just about everyone, we have not been to, it's called the wheel tax. You know, the council needs to approve that. It would take the, the, all the council and the mayor not to veto it. It's, you know, it's basically when you go to wreck your vehicle, it's $25 for a passenger vehicle, I think it's $40 for like a big truck, or $10 for a motorcycle and trailer. And I think that would get, you know, you could go out by one of those machines that would actually stripe the road with that wheel tax money. That's just my comments on it.
Brad? I, I did want to add that there is a pavement striping contract currently underway with the city. We did it last fall and the weather got the best of the striping contractor. So Washington and Franklin are part of that contract. I apologize, I don't have the limits with me for that. But as, as part of, following suit with Endot, we're gonna groove some of the centerline markings on that, on those segments, because the plow just wiped them off, right? So Endot highlighted that technology last few years, probably Wisconsin, other states had it prior to that, but that's an added value, because the grooming, the grooming will prolong the life of the pavement in excess of the cost of grooming. So that's, that's exciting. And that'll be for centerline only again, not, not necessarily the edge line, but that's the most important, most important pavement marking for paving.
I think they did that on Springland Ave, where they groomed out the blacktop and then put the stripe in. I thought they did that on Springland Ave.
So we do have, in the 2024-1, we do have the striping as part of the CCNG, so that, that is an added value as well. So the striping is definitely on the mind, you know, all of us, I guess.
Yeah. Tim, if I could mention this, before they do any crack sealing from Cool Spring Ave to 11th Street, okay, let them go ahead and crack seal, then bring the striping guy in.
Right.
Okay? Because on Barker Ave, when they crack seal, yeah, when they cover up all the yellow lines and stuff like that, so.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I'm gonna start from the bottom up. So you want to make sure the sewer and water lines are okay?
Yeah.
Then we want to make sure the road base is okay, then get the surface on it, then do the striping. That's, instead of the other way around, it seems like it happens a lot.
I'll be glad to answer any questions. You all have my emails and phone numbers, probably you have my address as well, my home address. I'm so, you're more than welcome to stop by anytime.
The thing, yeah, I think they better, I don't know where you live now.
I think Don gave it away.
You just live on Cool Spring Ave?
I do. So thanks a lot.
Ryan Tilden's where he lives.
Yeah. Thanks, Doug.
I'm glad I know.
Yeah. Cross the street.
I can give way to him. Yeah, thanks, Jim.
You're welcome, anything, anytime.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Is it quiet, Nancy?